Good evening and welcome. I am Paul Alpert. Planning Board Chair. This is a meeting of the Needham Planning Board. It is Tuesday, October 18. And it is 7:31 PM. This open meeting of the planning of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment, except in connection with any hearing that is on the agenda. There is only one public hearing on the agenda, and that is the Continued Hearing for Needham Enterprises LLC. But a matter has arisen in that, which we will discuss at 7:45 when it, when that public hearing is scheduled, that will necessitate our opening the hearing and then immediately postponing it to November 2nd, so there will be no no public comments on that matter tonight. And that will be explained when we get to it at 7:45 or later. First, we'll confirm that there's a quorum of the members of the Planning Board present. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Marty Jacobs.
Here, present.
Adam Block.
Present.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
Natasha Spada.
Present.
We're all present. Thank you. Next, I will introduce the Planning Department and town staff that are here tonight. Our Planning Director Lee Newman.
Present.
And our what's your title?
Assistant Town Planner Alex Klee. I'm here.
Thank you. Assistant Town Planner. I was looking for my, my list of participants and I put it aside somewhere. Assistant Town Pla- oh, it's right here. It's Assistant Town Planner Alex Klee. And that's all that's here from, from the town. Okay. As each agenda item is reached, I will introduce participants who are here to present or discuss projects and proposals. For those participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.NeedhamMA.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be by roll call. For each participant, for each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. For each person from the public who is recognized to speak, please remember to state your name and address for the record before speaking. That concludes our opening remarks. We will now get to the first item on our agenda, an appointment to discuss the Needham Housing Authority Modernization and Redevelopment Initiative. And here for that is Reg Foster, the Chair of the Needham Housing Authority. CHA, is that on, on this matter?
Yes, Cambridge Housing Authority is what.
Right, so I've got Margaret Moran. Yes, the Cambridge Housing Authority, a principal of the Cambridge Housing Authority, and Natalie Jansen, also in the Cambridge Housing Authority. Welcome. Reg, I turn the floor over to you.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Paul. Hello, everybody. Good evening. I'm Chair of the Needham Housing Authority, and I've been on the Board of Commissioners since 2010. And Margaret and Natalie are here to be introduced, and we'll go to the why the Cambridge Housing Authority in just a minute. But really, the purpose of, of tonight's introductory session is to give the Planning Board a heads up that in midsummer, July of this year, the Housing Authority finally launched our Modernization and Redevelopment Initiative, and this is not necessarily something you haven't heard about before, but, but it's been a couple of years, or a little bit more than that. And the purpose tonight is to, you know, give you, you know, just a brief opportunity for initial comments and questions to introduce our, our new consultants from the Cambridge Housing Authority, and probably most importantly, just get on your radar screen, quote unquote, because we are starting this five, 10-year initiative. Now, just by way of background for the audience and for some of the Planning Board members, I was last before you on the December 4th, 2018 meeting. And I presented the draft Housing Authority Facilities Master Plan that we've been working on for a year for, for comment and input from the Planning Board. And I went back and looked it up, and Paul Alpert and Jean McKnight and Martin Jacobs were present. Natasha and Adam were not, I guess, probably because you joined after that time. And that Facilities Master Plan, we circulated around to many other parties and then published the final plan in the spring of 2019. And we've been using it as a roadmap ever since that point in time. One of the things we did, at least suggestion is prepare, you know, a briefing document, which is in the beginning of your board packet, so it really starts, page one is really the page one of your board packet. And I'm going to ask Alex, yeah, you've got it brought, brought it up here. You'll see, I'm just going to do a brief walkthrough, but the, of, of the, what's in here for you, but the main objective is just to leave as much time as possible for comments or questions that any of the board members might, might have, they're the planning board members. Page one is just the, and two or three-page excerpt from the, from the management summary. And you'll see at the top there, there's a link, if you'd like to, you know, download the entire plan, you can go fetch it from the Housing Authority website. And, and, and it gives an overview of what we're up to. And the next page there, number two, our item, number two in the packet, it's on page five, briefly describes each one of the projects that were envisioned back there in 2019. And there are five of them right there, and I'm just gonna, again, not get into them very much, but this was all being caused by the fact that our, our existing infrastructure, with the exception of about 20 units, is very old and aging, and either needs to be subject of major modernization or, or really redevelopment. And the first of the five projects is to do this sort of modernization and preservation of the Seabook Reds and Cooks property. The site, site number two and three is in the High Rock Neighborhood. High Rock Homes was done, 20 units in, in 25, 25, 28. And there is an opportunity to redevelop another 60 units there. Linden Chambers, those of you who are familiar with it, is right across from the High Rock School, was built in the late 50s and early 60s. And it's really not economical to do anything but redevelop that property. Throw away more money upgrading it, bringing it into the 21st century, trying to modernize it than you would trying to do things over there. And then finally, it was envisioned that we had room on some of our property up in the north Needham area, the Seabeds Cook Property, to build a new 61-unit Senior Affordable Housing Unit. And, you know, I just draw attention to the right-hand side of this, this table here where we've sort of envisioned doing most of this, you know, 220, $126,000 of, of cost in 2019 with non Needham taxpayer money. There's envisioned about $5 million maybe of CPA funds going into this, but most of the other money will be coming from private sources, federal sources, state sources, and so forth. We go to the next page there, Alex. So after the, after we did the master plan, we developed an RFP, and there's a typo there, Freudian slip typo. We were going to issue an RFP on April 28th, 2020, and the pandemic hit us. And so we've actually postponed everything for a year, and in fact, got it out in April of 2021. And this summer, you know, after running a Chapter 30B compliant process, we selected the Cambridge Housing Authority as our Modernization and Redevelopment Consultant, and more on that in a minute. And, and moving on to item number four on the next page, we worked, laid out a work plan between now and next March, what we call Phase One, and the major deliverables are there. I'm not going to go into that in much detail tonight. Really no necessity of doing that. But coming back to the Cambridge Housing Authority, I included a, a presentation that the Board, Needham Housing Authority Board received the end of last summer on just a little bit about the background of the Cambridge Housing Authority and what, why we, you know, what their skills and abilities are. And, and it really gets to the question, why did we pick the Cambridge Housing Authority as our consulting partner? And, you know, in a nutshell, it comes down to, you know, several key advantages they presented us here. They were most advantageous by far in terms of their skills and abilities relative to the other two proposals that we received, which were private sector proposals. And they were also the most cost-effective proposal as well. The Cambridge Housing Authority has just spent the last 10 years or so redoing all of their roughly 2,000 to 3,000 public housing units right along the lines of what we are considering doing, and they have tremendous experience and along the line have built a in-house 25-person Planning and Development Department headed up by Margaret Moran. So in essence, what the Housing Authority, the Needham Housing Authority is doing is acquiring or renting and outsourced, you know, complete and self-sufficient planning and development department, something that we could never begin to afford to contemplate doing ourselves. They have also, Cambridge, you know, had a fair amount of experience of doing this sort of assistance to other small housing authorities like ourselves. They provided us eight references, which we checked out and, and really got excellent references. And the final big plus comes back to Margaret Moran, the overall leader who's with us tonight. She's a big plus because she played a, a key leadership role in doing the High Rock Homes redevelopment in Needham between 2005 and 2008. So she really knows Needham and, and Needham knows her. So that's just a brief walkthrough of what you've got in your board packet. I think we can turn off the screen sharing here, Alex. And we're here for whatever remaining amount of time the Chair wants to allow us to, to answer some initial questions or just receive some input and comment from any of the Planning Board members on what we're getting, getting going here.
Okay, Reg, I appreciate the presentation. It's all very interesting. I personally don't have any questions or comments if there are other members of the Board who would like to ask a question or would like to comment, please raise your hand. Yes, Jean.
Um, as you may, as you may know, Reg, as you, well, of course, you know, because the Needham Housing Authority was asked to provide a representative to the Planning Board's new Housing Plan Working Group. And I'm sure as part of our study, we will be focusing on the Housing Authority and its developments in our town, which meet a very important need, and your proposals for redevelopment of some of the sites. And one thing I don't understand, and I, I read the, you know, the report that came out a couple of, couple of years ago, and I look at our zoning map of the town, and I see that, for example, the Robert Cook Drive, that whole area is zoned Single Residence B. The Linden Chambers area is zoned partly in Single Residence A and partly in General Residence. And I don't understand under what legal authority those developments were originally built. Was it because of the state and federal? I don't expect you to answer this question tonight, but was it because they were state and federal funded projects and therefore exempt from local zoning that presumably at that time, even in the 50s and 60s, didn't provide for multifamily housing in these locations? Was it some, were, were any of them built under 40B? I don't think 40B came in until much later than these were built. So I just want to understand to what extent our current zoning would present barriers for the redevelopment that you have in mind for these developments. And as I say, I don't expect answers tonight, but I hope that will be part of what the Cambridge Housing Authority will study and advise on, and to the extent it, it has import into the housing, the Planning Board's Housing Plan Working Group, we can integrate that process.
I, I know that one of the tasks is in fact, you know, for any one of these projects and all of them to look into the zoning implications. But let me ask Margaret if you might, since you were here, when the High Rock Homes area was redeveloped for, maybe you might want to comment on Jean's question here.
I mean, I know, specific to the High Rock Homes, you know, there was a zoning petition that went forward in front of the Needham Town Meeting and changed the zoning to allow for the construction of the duplex units on the, in lieu of the single-family lots. And so, you know, the town can enact zoning amendments or changes, as you know, at any time. I mean, oftentimes, an existing building like what you have at Seabeds at Captain Robert Cook, or even at Linden and Chambers might have been built under and conformed to the zoning that was in place back in the 1950s and 60s, and would be grandfathered in as existing non-conforming properties, in that as long as you don't change the footprint or otherwise worsen the condition, you wouldn't have to seek zoning relief, but if you were to be looking to add a unit or add square footage, then you would have to look to what the zoning implications are and then figure out what if, what would be the process, if any, that you would need to go to to make sure that you were compliant.
I think it's fair to say, and part of the reason we're here today to give everybody a heads up, we're going, is we'll be looking at all these things, and to the extent that there's any question whatsoever, we're working closely with Lee Newman, her staff, as well as we go along, and if they feel there's something, you know, historically grandfathered that it would be appropriate to bring back before the Planning Board, we, we will be doing that in a completely transparent fashion.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the reason Jean asked that is to try to anticipate, get a heads up about what zoning changes you might be looking for to advance your program that we should start to look at as soon as possible. Am I right, Jean?
That's absolutely right, and that's why I mentioned Housing Plan Working Group.
And we have a representative on it, as you know, Jean. And we'll be tracking that very closely as well. And, and right now, we're just getting going, so this, we're translating the Facilities Master Plan, which was really a conceptual plan in 2019, into an actual actionable set of projects with priorities that we can go forward with, and not only from the point of view what you just asked, but of course, a big piece of this is making sure that the funding we're looking for is, is really there here a couple, three years later. And it may turn out to be better than it was a couple, three years ago with what's been going on with the ARPA funds and, you know, with your fingers crossed, what's going on with the infrastructure, you know, fun and games that's going on in Washington as we speak here. That may provide significant, you know, additional sources of revenue and funding for doing this sort of work.
Natasha.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Reg, it's great to have you here. Thank you for all this information, and I, I'm working with Jean on this, on the House, on the Affordable Housing Committee. And so one of the things that I do want to say is that this, in the next couple of months, there's going to be a lot of exploratory, like what, what, what tools do we already have, or what, what reports have been out there, so it would be useful to, to make sure that, that someone from your group not only attends, but also helps us gather all the information possible that we currently have as we study, you know, what is currently in place as a beginning of our process, and I think that will be really helpful, not only to us, but also, but also to you. There's a wealth of talent from all different parts of town and from all different professions that are going to be part of this committee, so I think we can all work together to, to come up with them.
Yes, absolutely.
Vision for the future.
And, and I can say that the Housing Authority started working about, you know, really unbelievably 10 years ago, right after we finished the High Rock Homes on, on this initiative, which we're launching here, and it's taken us that long to get it off the ground. And we do actually have a repository of documents that has been collected along the way. And one of the first things that Cambridge Housing Authority do, has been doing is extracting them from everywhere they exist, which can be as simple as, you know, on my hard drive, or it can be dusty archive boxes buried in archives, you know, in the Housing Authority's filing system here, and it's all being brought into a Dropbox-style repository. Absolutely, you, Planning Board and Lee's staff can have access to any and all of that information that, to an extent, might be useful.
Thank you. And if I may, Ed Shidler from the Housing Authority is going to be the person, the delegate from the Housing Authority on the Housing Plan Working Group. And I know Ed very well. He's a neighbor, lives here at Rosemary Ridge, and we serve together on the Board of Directors of, of this condominium, and I'm sure he will be a very good member of the working group.
I'll say for Paul, any, any other questions here? And I know you've got other things on your agenda here, obviously.
Yeah, Reg, we appreciate it, and ladies from Cambridge Housing Authority, thank you for coming. It's good to see you. We look forward to seeing you in the future. It sounds like it's good to get this moving.
We're excited to work with everybody in Needham.
Yep.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye, Dan.
Okay, so we are, we are after 7:45. It is 7:54. And so I'm going to jump ahead on the agenda to the, to the public hearing. This is a continued public hearing for the major project site plan Needham Enterprises LLC for property located at 1688 Central Avenue, regarding the proposal to construct a new childcare facility that would house an existing Needham childcare business, the Needham Children's Center. So as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, yes, Adam.
I was going to make a motion to continue.
Let me explain what we're doing first, and then we'll, then I'll take your motion. Thank you. As I stated when I opened the meeting, and there may not have been, there may be people here now who logged in around 7:45, who weren't here when I, when we opened the meeting. We will be continuing this hearing to the next meeting on November 2nd because of some communication that came in today that forces us to to postpone. I'll take the minor one first, as a very serious one. We did get a an email from David Lazarus, who is one of the neighbors, suggesting that we postpone the meeting because there are some things specifically on the traffic study, we had requested that that the proponents' traffic experts run a, a corridor analysis for the area, that area of Central Avenue specifically with regard to the, to the intersection at Charles River Street and the interest, and hopefully also the intersection at Country Way to, to include the signalized intersection that's that's in Charles River Street and, and the proposed site operations. They were not able to do that in time for this meeting. We had only requested that at our last hearing, so it's, it's kind of understandable, but Mr. Lazarus's point is that there are many neighbors who wish to speak, and he feels that it would be unfair for them to have to speak now without having that information because it might change what they want to say. But more importantly, we received emails from a gentleman by the name of Mike Connolly, who does not live in Needham, but who states that his children went to the Needham Children's Center. He states, he, he seems to be speaking in favor of the positions of the Needham Children's Center and the proponents. And the important part is that we got an email this morning, and I'm going to read part of it. I was notified by an NCC supporter about a potential conflict of interest from your chair, that's me, that has also been reported to the Ethics Committee and your attorney. I don't know whether he means the State Ethics Board or some other committee, but evidently, it's been reported possibly to the State Ethics Board, State Ethics Commission. Apparently Chairman Alpert is also a trustee of another childcare center in Needham. And he, he states, I cannot believe that this has not been disclosed when it is clear that so many knew about this, and he is also an attorney, and he wants to file a formal complaint. So he, he accuses me of having a conflict of interest and that, and, and that I should not be participating in this matter. During the day today, I consulted with Needham's Town Council, Christopher Heap, and after consultation, we came to the conclusion that I need to consult with, or I should, I, I feel I should consult with the State Ethics Commission, explain the facts to them, and get the opinion from the State Ethics Commission as to whether or not I should be recusing myself from this matter. I'm not going to go into the facts of the situation here. I don't think I need to. I will discuss that with the State Ethics Commission. And on the advice of Town Council, I will not participate in tonight's hearing. If we were to have a hearing, however, by my recusing myself, we're down to three members on a matter that requires four votes to proceed, and so it requires a quorum of four, so we don't have a quorum to proceed tonight. So with that, I will ask for a motion to continue.
So moved.
Second, I need a date and a time.
I'm, I'm moved to continue the hearing to November 2nd. Lee, shall we say?
7:45.
Okay, at 7:45. Okay, at seven forty-five.
Second.
I, I seconded. It is a point of discussion, Mr. Albert.
Yes.
Did you say that you have recused yourself from this?
I'm saying that I am accusing myself for tonight.
Well, we're just continuing the case.
We're continuing it because by my not participating tonight, uh, after discussing this with Town Council, we came to the conclusion that I should not participate tonight, that I should not participate until I get an answer from the State Ethics Commission as to whether or not I can sit on this matter.
Okay, thank you. I, but I just want to be cautious and make sure you actually have not retreated, recused yourself from this case.
No, I, I am stepping aside from participating for tonight only at this, at this point. I will bring this to the attention of the State Ethics Commission and discuss it with them as soon as I possibly can. So that hopefully this can all be resolved in time to proceed on November second.
Thank you.
In one form or another. So we have a motion on the continuance. Natasha, you've already recused yourself on this, so I guess you should abstain.
Marty is second to the motion.
Marty, the motion, any further discussion? Morning board. Okay, Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Ms. McKnight.
Hi.
And I think I can vote on this. I vote aye and, uh, we're continued to November second at seven forty-five. Oh, I should announce that the people who, who are here tonight or were, some that were here and as I announced that we weren't proceeding, it looks like they left. Evans Huber, the attorney for the proponent is here. Uh, Pat Day and, um, I believe Suzanne were here. And John Diaz is here. Suzanne is still watching and I see that she's on the screen. Thank you all very much. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. So, I have to find my agenda again.
The de minimis change, uh, Mr. Chair for the Jack Cogswell Building.
Okay, so for the Jack Cogswell Building, the de minimis change, um, we have Karis Lustig, the Director of Public Works for the town of Needham, and Christopher Heap, Needham Town Council. Welcome to you both.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you again.
You.
Great. So good evening, everyone. Um, we are here tonight on behalf of the town to request a de minimis change to the, uh, major project special permit for the Jack Cogswell Building. Which is the DPW's, uh, equipment storage building located on a portion of their recycling and transfer station at one four zero seven Central Avenue. This building, you may recall, was originally permitted back in two thousand and eighteen and has been constructed since then. And the reason we're here for the requested de minimis change tonight is that when the building was originally permitted, uh, we emphasized uh, that the building was originally intended to be unstaffed. The building was primarily intended for storage of, um, DPW equipment and vehicles while it was seasonally out of service. And that was the way it was originally, um, intended to be used and that intent was captured in the special permit that the planning board issued, which mentioned in several places throughout the permit, that the building was not going to be staffed on a regular basis. Now, with the onset of the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, last year, the DPW found a need to, uh, identify some additional spaces where employees could report in the morning and sometimes work from during the day. And that need was based on the need to space employees out, um, and have them, uh, based out of buildings other than the headquarters on Dedham Avenue. Um, so that, it was brought to the planning board back in January of this year, when we asked for a modification of the permit to allow for up to sixteen DPW employees to report to the building, Jack Cogswell Building in the morning. And occasionally work, uh, from that building, uh, primarily during inclement weather. For, uh, on a temporary basis during the, uh, during the state of emergency. The planning board approved that request back in January, um, and the concern that was expressed at the time uh, was whether or not there would be enough parking available on site to allow for those up to sixteen employees to, um, to be there, uh, during the day. Uh, a plan was submitted to the planning board showing that there could be, um, sixteen parking spaces located on site if they were to be, it's right, they were not. And that plan was basically incorporated into the amendment decision that you issued back in January. Now we're back in front of you tonight because that temporary approval was originally scheduled to last for up to forty-five days beyond, uh, the point at which Governor Baker lifted the state of emergency, um, which has happened. But although the state of emergency has been lifted, um, the need to continue to use the building to space out DPW employees continues at least for the time being. Um, so we're back in front of you tonight, asking that the, um, temporary occupancy of the Cogswell Building be allowed to continue, um, up to and including the end of April two thousand twenty-two. On all of the same terms and conditions that the board imposed, uh, in its original temporary approval back in January. Um, and that's all of my comments, um, but happy to answer any questions or Karis, if I missed anything, um, please jump in.
Karis, you want to?
I would just add, I was really hoping that at this point we would be beyond the need to space our staff out into multiple locations, um, but unfortunately with, um, the Delta variant going around, I have concerns in our operations that, um, for preservation of forces purposes, we still have to keep our staff somewhat separate, um, and distanced. Again, my main concern is that if someone were to get sick in DPW, we could potentially lose a significant portion of our staff to either illness or quarantine. And, um, knowing that we're getting into the winter season, we're having staff healthy is really key to public safety. Um, that's really the main reason for keeping this ongoing. Um, as soon as I, you know, talk with public health and we feel there's a high degree of comfort that we can merge all of DPW back into one organization and it won't have, a large impact on, um, our forces if, um, if someone were to, uh, get sick, uh, that's when we would want to go, um, back into our normal operations. So our intention is still, uh, to go back into one operation and to vacate the Cogswell Building. It's just going to take us longer than we had envisioned.
Okay. My only comment is that I hope you're not back here in April asking for a further extension. Adam, you had your hand raised.
I just wanted to confirm, I, I, I read the material and I looked at the site plan. I, but I can't suddenly recall offhand. Uh, Karen, this is for either, uh, Chris or, or Karis. Will you, what's the maximum number of employees you'll have at the Jack Cogswell Building?
So Chris, I mentioned it's sixteen.
That was the number we originally identified in the first request and it's the, we're sort of seconding that request again this time.
And is there, and I, I know that there are sixteen parking spaces at the facility. Is that sufficient for, uh, additional equipment and additional trucks separate from their own personal vehicles that they may use?
We have had no problems at that facility. We've not had any accidents with employees in that facility. I will say the individuals who work out of that are very talented drivers, um, so they can certainly, uh, park tighter and neater than I can. Um, so we really haven't had any issues or, and we also have not had any complaints from the neighbors as well.
And then my second question, I think, and that's good to hear, uh, thank you for that. Uh, you're making this request for a particular period of time. If I recall, I can't see suddenly how long you're looking to extend this for. Should we?
Believe it was said to be April twenty twenty-two.
April thirty, I see that. Uh, uh, is there any reason why we should not say August thirty-one?
I missed that, Adam. Could you repeat that?
Chris, is there any, is there any reason why we shouldn't make this de minimis change applicable through August instead of April to cover through the summer period? Would it be beneficial?
That would, that would, I think, be absolutely beneficial. We, I think, coming back to the board, we wanted to keep it on a reasonably, uh, short timeline, but I would certainly not, uh, not object to, uh, extending it out through August unless Karis, you think otherwise.
Other than hope, uh, no.
I mean, I just, I, I know that kids will soon be, uh, get their first vaccination and, and some people here may already be pursuing, you know, a booster shot, but regardless of people vaxing or not and who isn't, who isn't, this thing is going to be with us for an extended period of time. So, um, uh, at this time, Mr. Chair, would you like a motion?
If you wish to make one.
Jean, it looks like you were going to say something.
Me? Um, well, I did have a general question for background and understanding of the crisis. Um,
Actually, Adam, why, why don't we hold off on the motion? Because first we have to vote to treat this as a minor modification.
Yes.
Before, before we can make motions and approve the request itself. So Jean, why don't you go ahead?
Um, yes, um, I, I could make the motion for the minor modification, but I'll just start with my question for background. Um, I know, uh, just from general reading, uh, in the press that, uh, various, uh, federal agencies and I think state as well have ordered that, uh, their employees must be vaccinated or tested. And, um, then you read reports about the general cooperation with those orders. Uh, are the, uh, DPW employees under any such order?
Uh, we do not have a vaccine mandate for, um, DPW staff. I will say, um, the majority, the, I would say we're probably at ninety-five plus compliance as far as vaccinations go. Um, I think the concern has come out with breakthrough cases with Delta, um, and having small clusters of breakthrough cases. And that's really, um, the concern when I've talked to our, um, health director, there's no guarantee that if I had two people on a crew who, um, were positive, that I wouldn't have to quarantine even though it was vaccinated, um, in that particular case. And so that's really the area of concern is not so much, um, the unvaccinated, which there are very few of in DPW. It's really, um, if we were to have, um, more than one vaccinated, uh, individual, uh, stationed out of one location to test positive.
Understood. Okay. Thank you very much for the explanation. Okay.
Any further discussion? I don't see any hands raised. So may I have a motion with regard to accepting this as a minor modification?
Go move.
Second, anyone?
I second that.
Okay, so Marty made the motion and Jean seconded. Any further discussion on whether to treat it as a minor modification? Then I'll call the roll. Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Natasha Spata.
Hi.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. So now, Adam, you have a, you have a motion?
This is the more challenging motion to make. I still need some practice. I appreciate your indulgence.
Welcome to the board, Adam.
It's only been how long? I, uh, so that means Natasha, you're up next for the next motion, eh? I move that we, uh, that we grant a minor modification amendment, uh, to the decision. Uh, uh, in respect of application number two zero one three dash zero two with the original decision of April two, two thousand and thirteen as amended on June ten, two thousand and fourteen, July eighth, my birthday, two thousand and fourteen. January twenty, two thousand and fifteen, May sixth, two thousand and fifteen, January twenty-six, sixteen, July nineteen, two thousand and sixteen, November twenty, two thousand and eighteen, August sixth, two thousand and nineteen, September three, two thousand and nineteen, October nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, January four, twenty twenty-one, and June first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, as insignificant changes to effectively enable uh, DPW staff totaling no more than sixteen to be able to continue to work out of the premises referred to therein, uh, up to and including August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
So Marty seconds the motion. So it's, um, basically to grant the relief requested, uh, with the change of the date from, uh, April thirtieth to August thirty-one. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the roll. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mrs. Spata.
Aye.
Ms. McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. The next item on our agenda is a, uh, another de minimis change. Uh, minor modification for major project, uh, site plan special permit number twenty sixteen dash oh one. Petitioners fifty-seven Dedham Ave LLC with regard to the property located at fifteen and seventeen Oak Street, Needham, Massachusetts. And, um, here on this matter tonight is Attorney George Jenta and, uh, the applicant Michael Tazaldi. For the, the manager, I suppose, of the, of the LLC, Michael Tazaldi.
Hello.
Have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As indicated, this is a request for de minimis amendment to the special permit for the project of fifteen seventeen Oak Street. Uh, the, as the board knows, the, uh, the issue with the survey that resulted in an incorrect front property line. And as, and also in sort of fleshing out that issue, we discovered that the setback that was used, setback distance that was used on the approved site plan was measured to the wall of the building as opposed to the overhang. So while neither of those are significant from a zoning perspective, in order to bring the, uh, plans into conformity and have everything reflect, uh, sort of the, the reality, uh, this is primarily a request for a de minimis amendment to capture that. Uh, at the same time, we are also asking for a de minimis change to address, uh, a minor change to the front. In particular, the front steps and front landing is a little bit different than what was shown on the plan that was approved. Not in any material way. It's really a, truly a minor change. But in addition, the original plan showed a handicap ramp in the front and that has been removed in favor of a handicap ramp or handicap accessibility in the back of the building. Now, there was some concern raised about that previously, uh, and the applicant went to or had communication with the, um, the, the access barriers board and was given a reply or response that basically said that provided adequate signage is placed on the front entrance indicating that it is not handicap accessible, but that the handicap accessible entrances in the rear, that it would comply with the applicable regulations. So from a handicap accessibility standpoint, there's no issue with that, but we still do need to conform the plans and therefore need a de minimis, uh, approval or de minimis amendment for that. And finally, there were several, uh, minor changes that the board previously voted to approve back when we requested an occupancy permit or requested permission for occupancy of the residential units. Those included, uh, transformer change location from one side of the property to the other, installation of a pole, some changes to the rear parking and the, the handicap ramp in the back that I just mentioned. Uh, and there was the elimination of one parking space, uh, which was not required. It was an extra space to begin with. So the board already approved those by vote, but there was no actual decision issued because there was also no specific de minimis application. So we folded that in, so that's included in this application. And if the board approves this, this will clean up all these sort of little outstanding issues, clean up the issue of the front setback and the front property line and allow us to then move forward with finishing the project and closing it out.
Okay. Lee, do you have any comments?
Um, do I have comments?
No, no, Lee.
No, I, I have no comments.
Great, thank you. All right, um, Adam, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, um. I can't recall, uh, uh, George, if I was, if this came up before I arrived on the board, either way, I can't recall. Why was, what was the intention of having a? Why was, what was the intention of having a handicap access at the front of the building?
So it was simply the design of the building at the time. The thought was that the commercial space, which is primarily on the first floor, would have its main entrance sort of in the very front of the building. But in during construction, um, it basically didn't work out as well. And it, it also occurred that probably more people will be either driving and parking in the rear parking lot or will be, if they're getting car service, will probably pull into that. So therefore it's actually a better location to have it sort of more to the rear of the building.
To get it off, to get it off the street, you mean?
Well, uh, otherwise, like if people park, for example, they, they go in, they park in the back and then they have to come all the way around the front of the building. To kind of the handicap ramp. So it's actually, it's a, it's a more lot, the, where the ramp actually is now is a more logical, common sense kind of location for it.
Is there, is there an ADA compliance requirement to have two points of entrance or, uh, an egress?
So there, there is a requirement that there's a secondary emergency egress and the front entrance qualifies for that, notwithstanding the lack of a ramp because you can get a stretcher basically up those, it's only the three, like three stairs up to the landing. And then the other, the other part of the reason is the interior of the building changed a bit. So the front door doesn't actually access any part of the building that's sort of handicap accessible. So the only way to access the commercial space, for example, is off that back entryway.
So the front entrance access is the residences, the residences upstairs?
Right. There is a way to access the commercial space, but it's not the main access. It's not the main entrance. It's sort of a, uh, emergency egress.
And how many parking spaces are underneath?
Um, so I have to look that up off the top of my head. I do not recall.
Well, in any event, the parking spaces underneath are any of them for the commercial space?
So I believe, I believe that there's more than enough spaces underneath in addition to the residential. So I think some of them could be used for commercial, but I can't, that, that's my vague recollection going back a little ways now.
Okay. I don't think I have any more comments or questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Natasha.
So I have a question. So the original design had a ramp at the front of the building?
Yes.
And is that how the general public comes into the building and general, or does the public come through the back entrance as well?
So the original concept was that the general public would be coming in through the front, but now sort of with the changes on the inside of the building and sort of redesign, now the general public would be coming in through the back of the building.
So.
Where the handicap ramp is.
So it's universally designed so that everyone comes through the back of the building? No one enters through the front of the building?
That's, uh, I believe that's correct. The only, the residential units may have access from the front.
Okay. The only reason I bring this up is because the intent of MAB, the Mass Access Board, is to have universal design, right? So that people that are, have accessibility issues, whatever they may be, don't feel like they're segregated to a certain part of entering the building in a different way as everyone else. And so, um, it's just some, that's something so that I just want to make sure that, 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 that people that are using this ramp are not kind of put in the back of the building as kind of, you know, in various distance as well as everyone else is entering the building through the front.
Right. I, I, I lost some of what you were saying there, Natasha, but, but I did get the general, the point about the not sort of having it as a back of the building entrance sort of thing. And it is the main, really the main entrance. So the, that's the entrance that provides access to the elevator, for example. So that is the main point for everybody.
Right. The intent, yeah. So sorry if you couldn't hear me before. The intent of the law is that everyone enters the building from the same location so that it doesn't discriminate those that don't have, don't have the similar accessibility, you know? Whatever, that, that can come in through the, so the whole point is that everyone comes in through the same way. So if you were basically creating a ramp at the back of the building for only the accessible group, it would, it would, it would create an issue for that group to feel that they were being, um, isolated.
Right. Understood. And that is not the case here. It is a general entrance really for everybody. It's the main point of entrance.
Okay. Thank you.
Jean?
Yes, um, if, um, if, if someone who is not familiar with the building, but who is perhaps visiting a resident or patronizing one of the commercial establishments um, and is, uh, arriving by vehicle, but is handicapped, uh, uses a wheelchair or a walker, describe how that person, when they arrive at the front of the building, whether they're being driven or driving themselves, knows where to go.
So the way the building is designed, there's no sort of immediate parking in the front of the building. And of course, there's no parking on Oak Street either. And so they would, they would logically, they would turn into the driveway and there's no parking in the front part of the driveway. They have to go sort of the back part of the driveway. Once they're in that vicinity, it's pretty apparent that that's where the entrance is. Now, in addition, this was the, the, the AAB basically said that one of the things that has to be done is signage has to be placed on the front to make it clear that that is not the, that the handicap accessible entrances is, is around the side and back.
Very good. That's exactly what I was looking for. And another thing is where is the handicap, uh, parking space? Is the one outdoors, uh, behind the building? Uh, is there one under the building? Uh, where is it located?
There are two outdoors, um, sort of, that, that are right by the handicap ramp, which is sort of in the, in the crook in the, actually, you know what? Maybe, maybe I should share my screen and then you can, I could put this out a little bit better. It probably makes sense. Yeah, right. All right. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So this is the front here, right? And used to have a handicap ramp that kind of went down and then turned and then came in. And the handicap ramp now is back here. And here you can see the two accessible spaces.
Okay, very obvious. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Jean? Elsa?
I guess I, just a general comment, um, with regard to the moving of the prime location to the rear of the building. Our general, uh, desire in, uh, along Chestnut Street and in our downtown uh, for, uh, commercial establishments, uh, is, is that they'd be front facing and, uh, you know, create a sort of lively street scene. This is on a side street. This is on Oak Street. I think that, uh, concept we have doesn't particularly apply on this side street. And, uh, so I'm, I'm satisfied with the general arrangement, uh, that's worked out here. Thank you.
Also, as I recall, George, um, what we're calling commercial is really office space?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure that I.
Rather than retail space, which you would want to have being.
Oh, right. Right.
I meant commercial in the broad sense, yeah.
Yes, right. It would, it would likely be either, uh, office or some sort of a medical or medical related, right?
Yep. Medical offices.
Exactly.
Yeah. Marty, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
You're all set.
So if there's nothing else, uh, first we need a motion on the, on the request to have a de minimis change.
I move that the request to change, uh, to special permit for fifteen seventeen Oak Street um, be considered a de minimis change, not requiring notice or a public hearing.
Excellent. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Jean McKnight, seconded by Adam Block. Any further discussion on that issue? I'll take the roll. Martin Jacobs.
Uh, abstain.
One block.
Hi.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, so it's four ayes and one abstention. Um, we need a motion on the requested relief.
I was expecting Adam, but I, I'd be glad to give it a try if.
I was, I was gonna nominate, I was gonna nominate Natasha or you for this one.
All right, well, um, I'll move that we approve an amendment to the major project site plan review special permit um, dated October nine, uh, and the amendment would be dated October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, and it is pursuant to application number two thousand and sixteen oh one. Uh, the original date, uh, decision having been dated March twenty-nine, two oh one six. Um, um, and it was amended and restated, um, on November one, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll. Jacobs.
I abstain.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Ms. Spata.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have four ayes and one abstention. While we're here, have we all had a chance to read the draft decision? And any comment for changes to the draft decision? Hearing none, can I have a motion to, to accept the, the decision as drafted?
I move.
There, there will be some modifications to the draft decision to reflect Marty's, that's not, not voting in the affirmative. So I'll, I'll make those modifications.
Yeah, that's a technical change. So, um, I believe I had a motion by Natasha. Did you get in there, Natasha? And was that?
No, by Adam.
By Adam.
By Adam. I think I seconded.
And seconded by Jean McKnight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the roll. Mr. Jacobs.
Again, I abstain.
Yep. Mr. Block.
Hi.
Ms. McKnight.
Aye.
Ms. Spata.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's four, four ayes and one abstention. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Could I?
Yes, go ahead, Alex.
Could I ask you all now, um, if it's been working to do the signature sheets the way we have, um, the other option would be to have them at PSAB, but you'd have to come during, um, building opening time. Um, I just wanted to, you know, we did this right at the beginning and I just wanted to check in and see if it's working for everyone.
You mean signing them at Marty's back porch?
Mm-hmm.
I guess the big question is whether, Marty, you're still okay with that?
True. That's fine.
Um, I'm, I think it's equally, uh, convenient. Of course, I'm home during the day, um, not working. So it's equally convenient to go to PSAB or to go to Marty's house. I wonder how, is, is it inconvenient for you, Alex, or for the, you know, for staff in general?
Oh, no, I don't mind it at all. I just, I just wanted to check in because it's been over a year and, um, just wanted to make sure that that system is working. But I don't mind it all.
And we'll continue to have you leave them at, uh, Marty's back porch and
Okay.
That works better for me because I commute into Boston and, and, and so very, very often I don't, I, I, I get there when the PSAB is not open. And so.
Yeah.
That's worked better for me.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks, everyone.
We're always open.
You're always open.
That's right. No, it's.
Like McDonald's.
Um, I'll, I'll leave the next one there on Thursday.
Great. Um, we forgot to, uh, vote on the decision for, uh, fourteen oh seven, uh, Cent, Central Avenue. So.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. Yeah.
Have we all had an opportunity to review the draft decision?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have any, uh, any changes?
Yes. The, the change is the date.
Well, yeah.
In two places, I think.
Right. Right. So, so, uh, except for changing April, April thirty, twenty twenty-two to August thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, or wherever it appears. We have a motion to adopt, to, to adopt the decision as drafted.
So moved.
Yeah.
McKnight moved. And Marty, Marty Jacobs seconded. Any further discussion on that? Call the roll. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Ms. Spata.
Aye.
Ms. McKnight.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The decision is drafted with the one change of the dates is approved. Next item on the agenda. Um, oh, by the way, on, on fifteen dash seventeen Oak Street, I'll just read into the record that we did get a communication from the Department of Public Works. They had no comment. So the next item on the agenda is request to authorize an occupancy permit or temporary occupancy permit with regard to fire station number two. It's nice that we're ready to open.
Yeah.
We're moving right along here with our public safety buildings. Lee, do you want to bring us up to date on this?
Uh, so no, yes, I was approached by Steve Popper because I think they're looking at probably occupancy sometime over the course of the next three weeks. Um, so I just want to make sure that I have the authority to go forward and, and issue a temporary CVO provided that there is an adequate holdback under the contract to cover any work on the exterior of the building that's not completed at the time of occupancy.
Is that the only thing you're concerned about, Lee?
Yes, that's the only thing that I'm aware of. It's, it could potentially be an issue.
And how will that holdback be determined?
Um, he, we get an estimate for the unfinished work items and then I get a certification from the project manager that the town holds back those, this holds back some of those, those, those sufficient amount of funds to cover any, uh, to cover the unfinished work.
So we hold back a hundred percent of.
Hundred and thirty-five percent.
Hundred and thirty-five percent. Thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure of. So it is more than a hundred percent. It's hundred and thirty-five percent.
Correct.
Sounds good. Um.
Well, I'll move, uh, that we grant permission to the planning director to issue necessary instruction to the building department uh, for a, um, temporary certificate of occupancy upon receipt of the required documentation, including sufficient holdback retained to ensure completion of any unfinished work.
Second, second.
Thank you. I couldn't have said it better myself. Motion was made by Jean McKnight, seconded by Adam Block. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the roll. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Ms. Spata.
Aye.
Ms. McKnight.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous, five to nothing. Discussion of warrant articles. What's left to be said, Lee?
Well, what's, what's left to be said? I just want to talk a little bit about, about the protocol and how things are going to be run at town meeting. Um, I mean, you, the meeting is going to be held at Empowers Hall again. I mean, but it is going to be a slightly different protocol than what we traditionally had at Empowers Hall. Um, and so I did check in with the assistant town manager, Katie King, to get an idea of how the meeting is going to progress. Um, there are going to be two tables at the front of the hall, um, um, rather than the, the numbers that were traditionally there. So you're going to be seated actually in the first row um, as a, as a group. Um, and the expectation is even though, um, the presentations have been recorded, I think the town moderator was concerned that not enough people were actually listening to the presentations. So he's looking to have people make a very short, um, very short presentation on the article itself, two to three minutes. So Paul and Adam, I think you should be prepared on your two articles to say something briefly in a, in approximately, you know, two to three minute um, protocol.
I think my whole presentation that I recorded was only two to three minutes.
Well, there you go.
Mine, mine was, I think around four, but, uh, I can try and truncate it.
I, I think the moderator will let you go four, Adam.
But they're, they're not looking for long presentations. So, um, and also I think I told you, uh, I know Marty's not going to be at the meeting. I am not going to be at the meeting, but I, um, I had trouble doing Zoom last time because of the delay, um, of the meeting. So I'm going to be in Needham, um, now, and watching the meeting on cable and I'll be available on my phone. So if any question comes up, um, um, Adam or, or Marty or Paul, we can connect and I can communicate with you that way.
Yeah.
That's the way I'll be available too.
Um, I'm sorry, Jean? Yes?
Uh, yes, I, I, I expected that we would discuss, uh, our position on Article twelve, that is the resolution concerning the amendment to the current accessory dwelling units. Uh, we did vote, um, to recommend, uh, that town meeting not adopt, um, Article twelve. Uh, but as we know from our attendance at the. Uh, but as we know from our attendance at the recent select board meeting. The proponents are, are seeking a, a motion to refer. Uh, the, the substance of Article twelve, uh, to the planning board, uh, for further study. And, um, and I, I anticipated that we, the planning board. Uh, would recommend a positive vote on that motion to refer. And so I was hoping we would take care of that tonight.
Jean, am I correct that the motion to refer will be? Uh, to report back to town meeting at a future town meeting without having a specific date as to that future town meeting? Which is how.
Yes, um, uh, or is it necessary to have a, a report back even?
Uh, well, yeah, because it's, you're referring back in town meeting. You know, that it's, the motion to refer is usually, as my recollection is, that the motion to refer is usually, um. Uh, stating that, uh. Uh, the planning board will report back. Uh, like at the next annual town meeting or something like that.
So it's not a, it's not a refer to a committee, it's a refer back to the legislative body?
It's a referral back to the executive body. The planning board. The board that has your fiction over it.
Right.
Zoning amendment.
For, for the planning board to then report back.
Report back to town meeting.
Because it's.
This is a motion, the, the.
So it would.
Originally, it's a motion for a town meeting vote. So you can't just refer it back and say, but you know, if you choose, if you choose to ignore town meeting and never come back and report back. You know, that's, that's politically not a very good thing to do, so. Some, some motions to refer, my, my memory is that motions to refer usually. Um, states something about, uh, you know. That the board is to refer back, u- usually at the next annual town meeting is how they. They, they word it, but I'd like to keep this open-ended because it's going to be part of the. Our committee to discuss, and I don't think that our committee will be ready. To bring it back to town meeting by, by, by next May. I think.
Yes, I, I don't think so. Uh, so, um, it, it would be to refer back at a later date.
At a later date.
At a later date, yep. Okay, so assuming that the motion will be to refer to the planning board to report back to town meeting at a later date. Uh, does the planning, would the planning board support such a motion?
I'd be in favor of that.
I would.
Yeah, and I would be too.
I would too.
Yeah.
Do we need formal, a formal vote on, uh, our recommendation to town meeting? I believe we do, so. Jean, have you made that motion?
Um, well, I will, I move that the planning board. Recommend to town meeting that Article twelve be referred back. Be, be referred to the planning board, uh, for a report back to town meeting at a later date.
Second.
Well, the, the way you just worded that, it sounds like the planning board is going to make the motion to refer. Is that your intention, or is somebody? Is, is a town meeting member re- representing, um, equal justice in plan?
All right.
Recommendation.
I'm, I'm glad you asked that. Um, I was asked if I, as a town meeting member, uh, would make the motion to refer. And I said that I will, I think I.
Want to make, you want to make the motion as a representative of the planning board? I've got no problem with that.
Oh, well, all right then, I'm sure. Um. Then I would do it in that capacity, uh, but also.
Or do it both ways.
Also, as a, I am a town meeting member, so it would be, yeah.
Well, you can't make the motion unless you're a town meeting member.
Right.
So, uh, you know, no, but, but, but to say that the planning board. You know, a- as a representative of the planning board, you're making the motion to refer, I've got, I've, I've got no problem with that.
All right, well, in a sense, that represents the planning board's, um, recommendation.
Right.
Um, so.
So the motion was made and Adam seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Block.
Hi.
Ms. Spata.
Aye.
Ms. McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Unanimous.
Very good.
Make a motion to refer. Sounds good.
I think there's another piece of business and that is you, you've already voted your recommendations on our zoning articles, but I need to get your signatures on that and get it recorded with the town clerk. Um, so I'm going to have Alex, I think, leave that at Marty's house, um, on Thursday, um, so that we can get it filed before town meeting on, on Monday.
I am, uh, out of town on Friday, uh, through the weekend, so.
Can you get there Thursday night?
Yeah, uh.
Thursday afternoon?
Thursday afternoon I can, Thursday night I'm going, uh, with my family too.
Alex, will, will you be at the PSAB on Thursday?
Yes. But not tomorrow.
So it's fine. I can go in and sign it at the office.
Yeah.
Okay, just, um, let's connect because I'll be bringing it to Marty's and I don't want you to go to the. You know, be shifts passing in the night, so we'll work it out.
Yeah, and you know, um. I've got a, a workman scheduled to be here. Friday morning, so I might be able to. What time do you get in Friday morning?
Me? Uh, well, I have a Zoom meeting with Natasha and Jean and Lee at nine.
All, all right, then I'll get to Marty's.
Well, I probably won't pick it up before that meeting, I'm going to want to get there and get set up and I can't get there early because.
No, my point is, I was, I was offering to stop at the PSAB on Friday morning, but that's not going to work out.
Yeah.
So, um, leave the one that I have to sign at Marty's. And I'll stop at Marty's Friday morning to sign it.
Okay, I'll pick it up Friday midday. Um.
And to just get it on.
And I'll leave the, the minimalist change signature sheets there too, so they can all, everything can just be signed at one time.
Yep.
Between midday Thursday and midday Friday.
Good.
And now Alex, you and I will coordinate, uh, on Thursday and I'll come into the office and quickly sign whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, and then also, this is for you and or Lee, in terms of town meeting, I have a little PowerPoint. For my presentation for, I think it's Article four on outdoor seating. Um. Uh, so I just want to make sure that prior to town meeting that I'm able to utilize that deck. At town meeting.
Okay, so you want to do a PowerPoint. I was trying to encourage people to do things brief, but if you want, if you want to do a.
It's still, it's, it's still brief, but I just think that it's helpful for people to see. It's not a lot, it's not a big deck, it's very small, but I just want to be able to access it, that's all.
Well, then, um, we need that from you now, so we can coordinate with the selectmen because, um, they're, they're, the. The administrative person over at the select board basically integrates the PowerPoint, so it's one document. So you need to, Alex, we need to get that from him so we can get it to Miles.
Yeah, Adam, I will, I will not be present. So Miles, um, is the new Sandy Sankata, if you knew her, and, um. So he'll run it for you, I know it's short and it shouldn't be. You, you guys will be fine, but if you get it to us, well, you and I will talk tomorrow.
I see this.
Sure. Um, Lee, I don't know if now is a good time to discuss if they want to have a meeting on Monday in advance?
Yes, I think, you know, we always, we always at least schedule a planning board meeting ahead of town meeting in case something comes up. Um, and then we, then you generally just hold the meeting open, you know, after, after we posted it and opened it in case you have to deliberate at town meeting. So I'm looking for a time that would work, um, I'm thinking by Zoom, we would do this, this meeting, um, the pre-meeting, if you're available. On Monday, uh, maybe later in the day, that works for everybody, if we could choose a time.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Monday, the twenty-fifth.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Could it be six? P M?
That's, that's really hard for me because I'm doing daycare pickup. I could do up till four and then. I guess it's hard at six thirty or something because.
Let's do it, let's do it in the afternoon so that I can do it from the office. Before I leave Boston to come back to Needham for town meeting.
I don't anticipate that it's going to take more than fifteen minutes.
Yeah, it's going to be a Zoom meeting, I mean, you know, I mean, I could do it at town hall at seven o'clock. But, um, neither.
All right, let me.
Neither Marty nor Lee nor, nor, nor Alex will be there. So if we're going to do Zoom. Let's do like four, four, four o'clock, three thirty, four?
I can't do four to five on that day. Yeah, I, I have a problem, I, I take care of two little grandchildren from. From one P M to their father picks them up at six P M. Uh, now I have Steve, he could help me. Um. It's just tricky, if it could be at noon, I could do it right at noon. Um. If it could be at five, uh, just say, Steve, watch them, I've got a Zoom meeting, um.
No, no, five, five is definitely bad for me because I'll be.
Yeah, yeah.
Working around to, to pack up. Noon, noon works for me.
You can do any time during the working day.
Would noon work for everyone?
I, I can do noon. I, I would, might be twelve oh five, I've got another meeting in the morning that'll end at noon and I might need a little voice break.
Yeah, I can do that. I don't have to leave here till one.
You said it's fifteen minutes.
Seven and thirty seconds.
All right.
Yes, Natasha, about fifteen minutes.
I can do noon for fifteen minutes.
Okay, so let's plan on, uh, noon.
Or twenty-fifth at, at noon, I don't, I don't, I don't anticipate any, any crises, these are pretty simple zoning articles, I don't anticipate any problems. So we'll plan on, on noon and we'll post the meeting and then we'll vote to continue the meeting through town meeting.
Right.
It's easy, it's easy for you.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I, I think outdoor dining is, is a, everybody's in favor of it, this is not like the last time. Doing highway commercial one, I mean, this is, this is easy compared to that.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Now, we have minutes on our agenda and I was just scrambling around because I, I don't have the, uh. I usually have a printout of the minutes right in front of me, I'd have to go to a file cabinet and see if I could pull them out, but. Um, Alex, if you want to remind me what the dates were, I can just make a motion, I don't really need to look at them again.
Um, yeah, I can fill it up, hold on. Um. There was.
Way back to June, right, June twenty?
June twenty-ninth, twenty. June twenty-ninth, you had a second draft of those, just to remind you, and then.
Yeah, did, did that go out, did that go out in the, in the, uh, package?
Mm-hmm.
That's what went out of the packet, right, okay, so June twenty-ninth. Um, wasn't there another set of minutes, or was just that one?
July twentieth.
And July twentieth, okay. Uh.
I only have a July twenty minutes for this packet, am I? Did you add stuff?
I, I thought I saw them in the, on the, on the screen.
Uh.
Oh, wait, maybe, you know what, I apologize, I see June twenty-nine as well.
Okay. Well, if people feel, do people feel comfortable in going ahead with motions, uh, to approve those minutes? The only reason there was a delay and a kind of a back and forth about the June twenty-ninth. Was they didn't seem to match up with the actual vote that was taken on June, July twentieth. On that, uh, the property on, um, on Highland Avenue over the other side of the highway where Panera Bread is. Um, so there was a discrepancy in the work, in, so I had to resolve that and make some final changes that made everything fit. E- especially with regard to, uh, commer-, um, uh, convenience stores. And, uh, sports apparel stores. And making sure the vote matched.
Yes.
What the minute said, we said.
I'm just sharing this because I think that Gina, and even in your second draft, this, um, was still highlighted, so, um.
Did I really, Chris, eliminate the prohibition against? Oh. That's right, oh, yes, good, the vote. The, the, um, the discussion was that we don't want, that it would be too controversial, we do not want. To, um, allow convenience stores. But then, this vote includes convenience stores as, uh.
Eliminating the prohibition.
Yeah. To, to deny the relief requested and replace that with revisions that eliminate the prohibition against banks, video rental stores, pharmacies. And it does say convenience stores. Uh, so I guess it is something we need to discuss. Um. If you, and, and what you're looking at is the, uh, these are the minutes of July twentieth, correct?
June twenty.
In the minutes. Excuse me, July twentieth?
I'm pretty sure these are June twenty-ninth.
All right, this, oh, yes, excuse me, this is June twenty-ninth, um, but Alex also provided me with a copy of our decision. Um, that we approved on July, and, and in July twentieth. Um, you, you know, our vote was entirely different and, um, inconsistent with the decision we signed. Um, and it did not allow convenience stores, so I think that the. Representation of what we voted on July, on, on June twenty-ninth. Uh, the minutes are incorrect, so that's what I'm saying here.
Yeah, I agree with Jean because I do not remember making a change when we, when we discussed the decision.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I, I, I think you're correct, I think the discussion. Uh, or, or the vote on June twenty-ninth did not include convenience stores.
Right.
But it didn't, but Lee, did it include eliminating the prohibition for, um. Uh, video rental stores and banks and pharmacies and athletic and merchandise stores?
I had to go back and look at, and look, I, I, I had to go back and look at the decision itself and exactly how it's worded. I think this should probably just mirror what was, what's represented in the decision and what was voted at the following meetings.
So why don't we table this to the next meeting so we can have that resolved, in the meantime, let's approve the minutes for July twenty?
Well, also, I mean, if, if you guys were willing. You could just vote it pending us checking this. I can even listen to the vote on Zoom and then we can complete this matter.
So we get. Unless you come back, so that.
Yeah, if there's a question, sure.
We approve this, subject to a final check by planning department staff. Um, I shall move on both, uh, June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one and July twentieth, twenty, twenty-one.
If that's a motion, I second it.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion by Jean and a second by Adam Block. Any further discussion? Call the roll, Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, they're approved, subject to, uh, to June twenty-ninth. Being revised to reflect the actual vote. Good. Planning director report. What, Lee?
Uh, yes, I do have a couple of quick things, um, um, actually, I was approached by the town manager's office, I don't know if you recall, you. The planning board had actually, you know, voted a policy on outdoor dining, which basically, um, where we basically indicated we were going to relax our enforcement of the rules. Um, and we voted that we actually had a date, um, for that relaxation that was going to end on October thirty-first, um, two thousand twenty-one. Um, but the select board has received some, um, requests from some of the restaurants where they want to keep some of the seating outside through the end of November. And so they're going to be modifying their policy to allow that seating to remain outside through the end of November. So I'd like to have the planning board's, um, voted record on this be consistent with the select board, so I'd like you to vote to. Continue the relaxation of those rules, um, from October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, which is how, is how the policy is currently drafted. Through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one of this year, so it's for an extra thirty days.
So, second.
Okay, the motion was made by Adam Block and seconded by Marty Jacobs. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight. Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous.
Um, the other, the other thing I have is, is, and I'll let maybe Jean and Natasha want to talk about this a little more. We have a first meeting of the Housing Working Group. Um, it's set for this Friday. Um, and we've been working collectively on an agenda for that meeting. Um, um, Jean, do you want to speak about that since you and Natasha are going to be chairing it?
Oh, yeah, um, I mean, um, Karen, um, Soonaborg is our primary staff person, um, put together, um, a proposed agenda. And, um, and then we also put together, uh, a timeline, um, by which certain tasks are expected to be accomplished from now through, uh, the fall of two thousand twenty-two. And so, um, did you say you were going to display it, Lee?
Uh, no, I wasn't going to display it.
Yeah, and I mean, it calls, calls for, um, two community meetings. Uh, well, first, there'd be a collection of data and essentially a description of housing needs uh, that would be put together by Karen, uh, Soonaborg and, um, and we would have monthly meetings as we go forward uh, to, to, uh, discuss her progress with that and she'll write into reports. And then when we get to the point of this needs assessment, um, we'll organize, um, a community input meeting so that we'll hear from the community on, um, will present the deeds, hear from them if they have different points of view on that, that they wish to share, and also on, from the community on what their ideas are about, uh, housing strategies and so forth. And then then we'll go forward with preparing the housing, um, the housing plan uh, with goals, um, strategies. Uh, and then the, the final result of that will be a community meeting to present that plan. Um, and I, I think, I think that's, please correct me if I've missed anything important on that. And, um, so we, uh, we're clear that we won't have any, um, any result that we want to put before, certainly, uh, before, uh, we won't have anything to put before the twenty twenty twenty-two annual town meeting in May or, in May. It's possible that if there's something that really seems urgent that, and, and, and very much supported, that would have something ready for the fall town meeting. Um, but more likely we're looking to the next annual town meeting. So that's, that's pretty much our agenda.
And so I'll let you know, I heard, we heard from Marcus today, he has a conflict, um, and he's not going to be able to attend, so.
I know, I was very sorry to hear that.
Yeah, I think we're gonna need to look for some, an evening meeting, um, maybe Thursday will be the date that we settle on.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I know it's hard with people who are delegates from other committees who have their own meetings. It's, it's very hard to find an open uh, meeting for everyone, open meeting night for everyone. So we'll, we may have to shift around, you know, well, in January, it's going to be the second Thursday and in February is going to be the first Thursday or something like that.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Right, yes, Adam.
Is that working now? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, um, so the C A, uh, just to give you guys a bit of an update, uh, I mentioned that, um, I kind of reconstituted the C A a little bit. I, and broke it up into three subcommittees, one of which is studying, uh, small business condition in town. Another is, uh, will be studying, um, uh, um, a cluster-based economic development strategy for the town. And a third will be, uh, looking at, you know, if there are other commercial districts that, you know, could be, uh, that could be improved. Obviously, the C A reports into the select board. And, um, and one of the things that, uh, that subcommittee did is take a little walk around uh, the downtown, uh, a little bit on Ch- Chapel and a little bit on Great Plain and Highland Avenue. We did that once and then the second one, which we'll do coming up, you know, and I, I think a week or two, we're going to go down Chestnut Street. And then I will keep you, I just raised this because obviously any zoning goes through, you know, the planning board and I will keep you posted. Uh, you know, if there are any, you know, suggestions or thoughts while we report into the select board, uh, there used to be members of the planning board on the C A kind of for that purpose. I, um, you know, the, the C A will not be making, will not draft any zoning or anything like that. But it's just, you know, it's looking at if there are areas for improvement or things to consider and we'll make recommendations and then the select board would refer anything over to the planning board. Um, so I just wanted you guys to be aware of that and I think something that's going to be coming through the pipe, uh, we, I think, might be the consideration of a brewery in town. Uh, and the C A may, uh, may consider that at a meeting of the whole committee. And make an opinion on that as well, but, uh, I just wanted to keep you all posted on that front.
Adam. And do you have a copy of the Needham twenty twenty-five study?
I do.
Okay, because I, I think everybody in the C A should have that and review, review it as part of what they're doing.
So that is, um, an excellent idea. Thank you for raising that, Marty.
I'm not sure everybody on this board has seen that either. So I wonder if, is that something you could distribute to the group?
Be helpful.
I can, I, I, I thought I had done that, I think, at the time it came out, but we can do it again.
Yeah, you may, you may have, I don't remember, yeah.
Yeah, I probably have it in a file somewhere, but have it distributed. But I, I want to comment, Adam, on, uh, your, uh, intention to study, um, I guess the s- small-scale retail, is that, is that how you just?
It's, it's, it's a, a small, small business committee.
Small business, because I think that informs the work of the, uh, Housing Plan Study Committee. Because one thing we're going to be discussing is mixed-use housing. Uh, with, um, our zoning about fifteen years ago, we, in our downtown area in Chestnut Street, uh, put great hope on the concept of mixed-use housing with retail on the first floor and housing above. And we haven't really had the development that we envisioned. Um, and we'd like to understand why, why not?
So I think that's going to be really studied more by the District Refocusing Committee than the Small Business Subcommittee. The Small Business Subcommittee is, is more focused on attracting small business to, uh, town and understanding what challenges small businesses have. Some of it may be a bit of, you know, the permitting, uh, process and how to go through that process, which Lee and Amy are available to help businesses to walk them throughout that process is, it's not, that's not really a zoning thing.
Well, it is in this sense. Um, if we require the first floor of these buildings to be used for retail or restaurant, but there is no market for small-scale retail. For example, the building on Dedham Avenue that has the apartments above, um, has a photographer's studio on the first floor, uh, which, you know, isn't quite retail, but we thought, wow, it's good enough and of course, it's a very nice display there. And also, uh, we've recently, um, accommodated, uh, professional offices on the first floor, two dental offices, which we originally thought, well, that's not what we mean by whatever, uh, words are for, for, uh, the first floor. You know, business uses. And so, um, I know that's, it truly sounds like it's kind of part of both of your studies, both the district study and, um, how do we attract more small businesses to our town? Um, so that we can have the kind of lively street scene, scene we envision when we made these rules, about what, what development we want. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking maybe at some point your group comes in, has a meeting with our group, you know, with the Housing Plan Group.
Uh, I, I appreciate that, certainly open to it, happy to coordinate among it, uh, happy to coordinate. It might be me and Amy, we don't even have, uh, really have a vice chair, uh, you know, at this particular moment, but, uh, that, if that's helpful to you, happy to. Overall, I think the C A's general position, uh, is, um, is that greater density would improve the retail condition and improve demand in the downtown, uh, so having apartments regardless of if, if it's classified by age or not, would still be a benefit. Uh, but it's, the zoning element is not really part of what uh, small business has been dealing with, but Amy can certainly speak to any questions that you may have or that we may have to help coordinate a wider effort that improves both housing in Needham and, uh, and business in Needham, particularly small business.
Yeah, good, I'm glad we had an opportunity to discuss it, um, okay.
Thanks for bringing that up. Shall I move to adjourn?
I, I've got one more thing. Alex, I was hoping you might be able to share the screen on the question that Hank had asked us about the electric cars, so I can get some clarification on, um, the permitting at P S A.
No, we all got it in our packets.
Okay, we, uh, well, if you all got your packets, I, I, would, would it be helpful if Alex shared the screen?
Yeah, if you can.
Yeah, and for anyone watching at any point. Um, how many sheets was it at this? That's not the first sheet.
It might have been two shoot, two sheets, but it seemed like.
This is, is this the one you want shown, Lee?
Straight.
Site plan.
Oh, you can't see it yet, sorry.
I think the site plan that shows the reconfiguration.
Is this the one you want shown?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so, um, I have been approving, um, the installation of, um, the, um, infrastructure for, um, the, for electric cars and in different parking lots across Needham under the insignificant change policy that we have, which allows me to do it outside of your process. And I had originally approved an installation at P S A. Um, because it was all going to be underground with the exception of the, um, mechanicals that sit in front of the cars where the charging actually takes place. But in the process of this, um, it became apparent that we either needed to bring in some additional electrical lines, um, which was one, um, option that Hank looked at, which was, was going to provide for some overhead wires coming into the property. Um, and he was successful actually in getting rid of that option and just basically providing for the installation of a new transformer at the property. Um, and then basically the expansion of the fencing around that transformer location. So I think on your screen, you can see, um, where the existing generator and transformer are and they're in the fenced enclosure behind P S A. So he's, they're proposing to bring in a, a new, uh, an, an extra transformer and to extend the fenced area. Um, and I just wanted to show you that, um, and get a, a feedback from you in terms of whether you feel comfortable with my approving, uh, the installation with that modification.
Isn't that at the front of the building? Isn't that the entrance right there to the left?
Yes.
So is there any way that they can screen it with, with something else besides a fence? It just seems.
It's the back of the building though, right?
No, it's the entrance.
The front of the building, yeah.
It's the back of the old water, um, water and sewer building.
But the walkway to P S A, she's correct, you're, you're, when you're, when you're walking into P S A.
Walkway to P S A is right here.
Yeah, that, that whiteness, that's the bricks that, with the fan, with the walker, walked in.
So it looks like what you're doing is it used to be here and now we're making it here.
Well, no, it's, it's currently, well, it's currently the first, the box you have at the top.
It, it, it's currently this one here, existing transformer, right?
In blue, right, right, that's, it's currently there and they're adding another one, which is a new.
Now you're adding another one here.
That's correct, and they want to, that's correct.
So I guess my question is, is there, you know, this is the front entrance to the building. Is there any way of screening it with some landscaping or something, so?
As opposed, as opposed to the fencing?
Well, I mean, or what does the fence look? I mean, I, I, I just feel like if this is the front of the building, you have nice landscaping here and then you're going to have like the back of the house of the building next door. Because when it was, when it was in the perimeter of the building, you know, when it was, it kind of felt like it was alone, but now it's encroaching into the front yard of the space between.
I think I'm going to suggest that he just maybe, we, we, we do this through some kind of de minimis process so that you're involved in the decision-making.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, how are, how are they doing this? Um, are they doing it? Are they hiring anyone to do this? Could they do a view as you're coming in?
I'll ask, I'll ask Hank, um.
It's just gonna, it's pretty big. I mean, it's, it's, it's a pretty significant.
Is it necessary to fence the transformer for safety purposes?
No, the transformer doesn't need to be fenced.
Okay. So it could be, it could be surrounded by bushes, something like that. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll ask him to look at the landscape and the option and I'll tell him that the, that you want to see, you want to see the proposal informally. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Is, is this a bot, is this the reservoir in the top right of the slide?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, you're saying, and this is the, the main public entrance way into the, uh, P S A.
It's the only entrance.
Well, there's, there's an entrance at the back of the building, at the back end.
Right, but it's not a public, I mean, this is the main entrance to the building, this is the.
You're right, and you, and you walk right past, and you go walk right past that and that's, that's really what you see when you, when you come in.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll get back to Hank on that.
I move to adjourn.
A second.
A second.
Okay, motion adjourned by Adam, seconded by Marty. Oh, people moved around on my screen, so I'm going to go in a different order. Natasha Spada.
Hi.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, we're adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
With you all.
Good night.
Good night, Red Sox are winning two to one.